I'll call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We don't have anyone to do our invocation, but I've asked Commissioner Griffiths to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand, please?
Thank you, Chair. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as our own nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Thank you.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rutherford? Commissioner Rankin?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Here.
Commissioner Laney? Vice Chairperson King? Chairperson Zercher?
Here. Item number five is the approval of minutes from the April 10, 2023, regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
Has it been moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to announcements. I'll go ahead and read my opening statement. Good evening, my name's Matt Zercher. I'm the Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll be presiding over the Commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the Council. The Commission is bound by specific regulations and guidelines for considering applications, and there are also a surprising number of things the Commission cannot take into consideration when reviewing an application. Finally, members of the Commission are volunteers and not paid employees. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I'll read the hearing application into the record. Once the application has been read into the record, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the Commission. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission will then direct any questions they have regarding the application to staff. After the Commission completes its initial review of the application, the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. After the applicant has completed their comments, I'll open the floor to general comments from the public regarding a current application being discussed. I'll go ahead and just read the rules for public participation. Speakers are limited to a three-minute period. Upon the conclusion of three minutes, please promptly finish your remarks. If you wish to comment, please remember that you may only comment on the application being currently discussed, not on any other issue. Please direct your pertinent comments to the Commission through the Chairperson and not to the applicant, staff, or individuals within the audience. Please keep your comments brief and to the point. Please try not to repeat what others have already said. Speakers cannot donate their time to another speaker. Comments or outbursts from the members of the audience are not permitted. Call to public is for discussion on anything that has not already been discussed this evening. And with that, we'll move on to item number seven, which is public hearing items. Our first item this evening is zoning map change 23-001, and we'll also hear the accompanying preliminary development plan 23-001. You want me to read into the record, or do you want to?
Please.
All right. Upon the application of Marcella Mora-Yatko, authorized agent for owner Prescott Valley Holdings LLC, a request for zoning map change from R1MH Residential Single Family Mobile Manufactured Homes and C2 Commercial General Sales and Services to RSPAD Residential and Services Planned Area Development on approximately 33 acres located at the northwest corner of Market Street and Great Western Drive. Preliminary development plan 23-001, upon the application of Marcella Mora-Yatko, authorized agent for owner Prescott Valley Holding LLC, a request for preliminary development plan approval for villas at Prescott Valley comprising of up to 385 leased multifamily dwelling units on approximately 33 acres located at the northwest corner of Market Street and Great Western Drive. Presenting this evening, Ernest, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I'd like to remind the applicant that we're one member short of tonight's full complimentary staff, so they have the option to pull or do whatever they want with that. Just wanted to remind, sorry about that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, at this time, staff is recommending that ZMC 23-001 and PDP 23-001 be tabled to allow several items to be addressed. Staff would request that the presentation proceed by staff as well as the applicant, giving them time to address the Commission and to answer any questions you might have, and that the item then be tabled and referred back to staff to resolve the items that need to be addressed that have been expressed by the Commission. I would request that Ms. Barrigan be allowed to do the presentation on behalf of staff, and then the applicant be given time to do their presentation and allow for any questions that you or the audience might have at that time.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Barrigan.
Jessica, take it away.
Thank you, good evening, Chairperson and fellow Commissioners. Before you this evening is a request for consideration of two separate items which will be presented concurrently and will require two separate motions. The first request is a zoning map change, ZMC 23-001, to rezone an existing parcel designated R1MH Residential Mobile Manufactured Homes, and the adjacent parcel currently zoned, C2 Commercial General Sales, Planned Area Development on approximately 32 acres. And this is to become RS PAD, this is residential and services. The Commission's approval of the ZMC would allow the applicant to move forward with their proposal to construct the 385 total town home units, including a two-car garage that is attached with a total gross density of 11.7 dwelling units per acre. The preliminary development plan, PDP 23-001, is represented as a private gated for rent community held in common ownership, offering a variety of shared amenities, pool, dog, park, playground, clubhouse, and various open pathways and open spaces. Based on new information, staff is recommending that these items be tabled to allow coordination with the applicant on the items stipulated in your packet. The proposed site construction is generally located on Glassford Hill within the Glassford Regional Marketplace on the northeast corner of Market Street and the north Great Western Drive, north of State Route 69 and the crossroad shopping center. The property fronts Market Street and a publicly dedicated roadway, as well as the future Jasper Parkway on the eastern border of the subject parcel. This area was annexed into the town in November of 1990, and in 1999, approximately 82 acres, including the subject site, were rezoned from RCU 70 to C2 PAD, and in 2000, a final development plan was approved for the Glassford Regional Marketplace that you see here on the screen. This made way for the approval of the rezone of a portion to RS PAD that allowed for the construction of the 290 units on the west side of the subject parcel. It's an apartment complex known as the Terrace Glassford, Terrace is at Glassford Hill. As you can see here, this general plan designation is of that of community commercial, and it is intended to allow for both neighborhood and community-serving uses. Other surrounding uses include an existing car dealership, hotel, I'm sorry, car dealership, hotel, a sports facility, and construction is currently underway of the bungalows rental community with additional development likely to occur to the southeast of the proposed community. The majority of the land north of the subject parcel is state trust land, which is managed by the Arizona State Land Department, and was classified as suitable for conservation purposes under the Arizona Preservation Initiative. Additionally, the town has recently completed a long-awaited trail known as the Summit Trail, which climbs nearby the state trust land up the summit of Glassford Hill. The pad resoning proposal conforms to the recent changes approved by the town's general plan and is supported in the current Glassford Regional Marketplace-specific area. As you can see here is what it is currently zoned as. And here's an image of the proposed zoning. Following the November adoption of the 2035 general plan, the proposed RS zoning, as illustrated here, would be appropriate for this location, and it is also allowed within the community commercial designation. Here's an image of the preliminary development plan. The rezoning is accompanied by this preliminary development plan, PDP 23-001, which indicates the building locations along with parking and access configurations. It provides general guidelines for the property per the pad district. The landscaping is expected to change in a collaborative effort by the applicant and town staff to reengineer the northwest portion of the site, showing significant surcharge there, including the town-owned parcel on the far northwest corner portion of the site. And this is in order to better integrate into the town's existing trail system, so that will be an item to be conditioned. The applicant also provided a transit impact analysis report, which their transit engineer will be working to revise to provide more specific recommendations that will improve the level of service in this area. The main access roads will be Market Street and the future Jasper Parkway, which was stipulated to be completed prior to final occupancy. Final development plans will be required to satisfy all the listed stipulations and must be approved by the Town Council after approval of the PDP by the Planning Commission. A neighborhood meeting was held on Thursday, March 2, 2023, with all property owners within 1,000 feet having been invited by first-class mail. There are four members of the public that were present and the applicant, and there were no negative comments. This item is also being required to have a 2% rent surcharge on all the unit rentals, and this surcharge will be applied as a condition of the rezoning to support the residential uses that would not necessarily produce the ongoing TPT tax revenues. At this time, the Commission is being asked to consider if the ZMC is in conformance and is appropriate, staff does support the request and recommends tabling both the items in order to mitigate some of the issues that have been brought up due to the topographical challenges. Here is an image of the elevations that were provided. And the applicant is here for any questions. They also have a presentation, as was mentioned earlier.
Okay, thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the dice up for questions from the Commission to staff. Is there anyone wanting to ask any questions right now of staff? Commissioner Evans?
My basic concern with this is density in relation to the other projects that are either built or under construction there. Do you have any numbers on the existing project and the two under construction as to absolute number of units and density per acre and how that would compare to what this proposal wants to do there?
I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but I do recall that the rezoning would actually reduce the number of dwelling units on this project.
Any other questions of staff from the Commission this time? Commissioner Rankin?
Is there a list of the items that you're requesting from the developer as to what they still need to do?
Yes, it's actually at the very end of your packet, at the bottom of where it says staff recommendations. Those broadly state the issues that had come up.
Those are the ones that are delaying anything coming to us?
Yes, they're working on perfecting it for the FDP.
Commissioner Rankin, is that all?
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Jessica, hi, thank you. I am a little concerned with the staff recommendations at the bottom of our report, since I've heard that there are many other items that need addressing. So do you feel that those other items then will be addressed in a more complete report coming back to us? Because these recommendations are so open-ended, you could mean anything from reading them. There's no definite definitive replies. Yes?
Yes, we've actually been in conversation, staff and with the applicant, so that we can have this perfected for the FDP. So each item was discussed with the applicant.
So there will be a full perfected report of stipulations?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Is there a TIA being done?
There was a TIA that was already done, but again, we've been in discussion with the applicant to revise that, and the applicant is working on that. There are traffic engineers here today for any of those questions as well.
Was the TIA, or any results of the TIA in our packet, or no?
They were, yes.
I missed it, I apologize.
And just for clarification, you had mentioned earlier that we had a hotel up there. The hotel is no longer a hotel, it's the View Apartments. And then we have the other apartment complex that was basically approved on both sides of the View, and then we have the bungalows being built below that, and then across the street from that, we also have an apartment complex that has been approved years and years ago, but nothing's been done on it. To Commissioner Evans' question, if that's something, that question in particular, the density with regard to those other projects, if that can be presented to us when we revisit this, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes.
Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Rankin?
I guess my only other concern is, in the drawings that were given to us, it showed some retaining walls, but, oh my gosh, the slope of that property is going to require a lot, and I'm wondering if those retaining walls are going to have an effect on the total amount of units, if they're going to have to adjust those down.
I'll let the applicant touch on that. I know that we have talked about that area with significant surcharge being reengineered to potentially accommodate a multi-use path, and that's still being worked on, and we actually should be meeting sometime this week or early next week with our transit coordinator as well, so that we can see how we could fit it into our circulation plan.
Okay, because currently, which we knew with the original, the corner there at Market Street down below, the development that's under construction now, they have a retaining wall that's easily 20 feet high, and going right across the street from that onto this project, we really have, by looking at that footprint, we have no feeling at all for how that's going to be addressed, because they're going to have a similar slope. So depending on how they terrace that down and handle that drainage all the way down to the bottom, I'd like to have at the entrance that they have on Market Street, I'd like to know what that grade is there elevation-wise compared to what it's going to be down at the bottom at the future Parkway, because I've been looking at it, it just doesn't look like they've addressed that properly. I could be wrong, but there's a lot of fall there.
That is one of the main issues that is currently being worked on.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Jessica, I just want to make sure when this does come back, our staff report says that the fire marshal has reviewed and preliminarily approved the design along with minor comments that shall be satisfied prior to the issuance of final construction permits. It's important for this Commission to know what those comments are, please, when that moves back to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Laney?
Jessica, I have a question. I see by the elevations that they have a two-car garage, and I'm presuming that there's two-car spaces in front of that two-car garage. What about guest parking? How many parking spaces have been allotted for visitors?
That's a good question. I did not bring those numbers with me. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Very important, because with the other apartments across the way, there's a lot of on-street parking, and we can't handle anymore on-street parking in that area.
On-street parking was one of the, or off-street parking was one of the issues, and that is also being worked on. I'm hoping the traffic engineer who's here today for the applicant can answer those questions.
Any other questions of staff from the Commission? Seeing none, thank you, Jessica, I'll invite the applicant up at this time.
I am going to put on there. Screen mode, okay. And then do I just press the down button for? So you'll just go like this.
Okay, all right.
Good evening. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
My name is Mary Grace McNear. I'm with the law firm Buse, Gilbert, and Groter in Phoenix, and I'm here representing the owner of the villas at Prescott Valley. I just would like to introduce also my client who's here, John Bonifus, and then we have Larry Wendell as well with Trilogy. I'd also like to introduce our transportation planner, Scott Barnhart, and Greg Shaner, who is also on the Matrix team of consultants that we have dealing with this matter, and not least, but certainly not least, my planner, Marcella Mora-Yatko, who makes all these things run smoothly. So I just stand up here and talk. So I really want to say, first of all, that I appreciate so much the feedback that I heard for staff. That is very, very helpful for us to know exactly what we should address, to make sure that, you know, we have a project that can come through your committee successfully. Now, we thought, we have been in talks with the staff for about two months now since we submitted our application, and we did believe that we had it in the right posture to bring to you. We were told, and we thought, that we could work on some of these issues, all of these issues frankly, between Planning Commission and then the final council hearing. And so today, we heard today that there was concern from the Commission members, and that's why, and so we kind of scrambled around to give you that one-page sheet. Those have conditions on it, by the way, Committee Member Griffiths, that we propose, we are proposing some of the stipulations that we think would be helpful here. So, and we have had robust discussion with staff about each and every one of these issues. I want to assure the Commission, I just don't want this to reflect poorly on my client, who we really worked, we were in meetings last week about these issues and developing them. We just thought that, and were told that, we could submit additional plans between Planning Commission and the final development plan at Town Council. So I want to start by saying that, and then I will also say that I won't be giving our full presentation today, because I understand that you all are going to move this to a continuance. I would appreciate a continuance to a date certain, because what I heard earlier today is that there might be a continuance. Now I hear that it may be tabled. I would appreciate a continuance to a date certain, so that we know what we're working toward, and that seems to be fair in terms of open meeting law. I mean, we're all giving our presentations here tonight, but, you know, there may be some, I mean, I think we should continue it to a date certain. Let's, let me just say that. So I want to go right off the bat and say, first of all, we're really happy to be coming into the town of Prescott Valley. This is an important development for us, the developer, as well as, and we know it's important for the town. And what I want to start with is probably our last slide, which tells you what we think are some of the benefits for the community to this particular development, the way it's proposed. So this development will develop on vacant property in a way that fits the surrounding community and the planned development. It provides a high-quality, diverse housing options for existing and future residents, and it supports the development intent for the Glassford Hills-Dells Regional Park. We understand how important this project is to Prescott Valley, and we intend to make it beautiful, a beautiful gateway to this recreational area, and we want to work through, we want to be a good community member, and we intend to make it that way. It contributes to the quality development along Jasper Parkway as well, and it brings the zoning into conformance with the current general plan designation. So we know it's a big deal. It's a big deal for us, too. We understand the town's vision for this project and for the Glassford Hills Recreation Area. Your city manager has been very, very helpful in explaining to us what the plan is for that area, and so we have nothing but desire to meet the expectations and the town's compliance with the town's zoning code, which I would submit that our application already does meet all of the requirements, parking requirements, parking requirements. It meets the open space requirements, it meets density requirements, and we've talked through these issues with the staff. So we are a little bit confused as to why we would have to hash these issues through again, but we're willing to talk about them. So I would like to go to the staff, the actual thing that I sent up this afternoon, and for the first topic, we're going to talk about traffic, and I'm looking at slide number 21. So the staff report and the pre-application report, so we prepared and compiled, you know, a binder full of documents, that we had a pre-application conference with the town after we submitted it. So we've had ongoing discussions since the beginning of this matter, but... ongoing discussions since the beginning of this matter. But our plan has always been, we submitted a traffic impact analysis with our initial application. And at the pre-application meeting, staff told us, well, we don't really like, we got comments back after the first review also, that said, you know, don't just suggest, don't just say that it's a regional problem, suggest some solutions. So we are going back, and we have our traffic engineer here to talk about it. And he's going to suggest some regional solutions, such as widening the State Route 69 for more through capacity and potential additional turn lanes in connection with that widening. Those are the recommendations that we would make. And of course, the developer would participate to their proportional share of that off-site improvement. So that's already, as far as we were concerned, that was already resolved. And if you have any more direction on that, I heard a little bit about the density and how those other unbuilt and being-built projects would be affecting the traffic. So that's what I'm going away with, that you want to see more about that. Not what was addressed in our traffic study and questioned, what we were questioned by staff about, but more the regional solution and, you know, how we would participate proportionally in that as to the impact of our development. The site-specific roadway improvements, we've already agreed to that. We think the stipulation, I agree, is open-ended, the stipulation, but we are willing to do any offsites that are related to the impact of our development. And we've already had some discussions about what those would be. I frankly, I'm a little confused by the statement that there is more input from the staff on that, but I'll be waiting to hear what it is, because we've already been over that quite a bit. We also would suggest a stipulation that includes a development agreement, so that we could resolve between us and make commitments about things like off-site improvements, the trail connectivity, which again, is, we are completely on board with showing, and I can show you where we're looking to do trail connectivity today. But we think that would be properly addressed in a development agreement. And we could work on that development agreement and conclude it before any certificates of occupancy are issued. So that would be also a way to make sure that, you know, we offer that, of course. And of course, my office would draft it, and you guys could react to it. And we could work that out with staff pretty quickly, I think. And we've already developed, regarding the water supply, we've already coordinated with the town attorney and the city manager about stipulations for a water supply, and when that would be required by the city at the time of issuance of building permits. So that's our suggestion for the stipulation there. The Glassford Hills Trails connectivity, let's just talk about this a little bit. So that's the Glassford Hills area as we understand it, the recreational area as we understand it. And we already are planning to provide trail connectivity. If you look at the top of this, at the top of this site plan, that shows the north edge of our property. Right by, oh, sorry, that one does. The top of it shows the retaining, the detention base, and then the north edge. So our first choice for trail connectivity through our park, or through our facility, or for our development, is right there on the most, closest to the detention pond. And then if other connectivity was needed, we could connect those two to the west. It's my understanding that the fall across the property is pretty significant, and so it would be much harder to, but it could still be done. We could do trail connectivity to the single-acre parcel up in the northwest corner there, that's not part of our development. If that was needed, we could do it. But there's already trail connectivity planned, we're very excited about it. It's already there. Access to the town parcel, I understand, is also a problem, an issue for access to the town parcel to the northeast. Again, those retaining walls are, you know, we've had two discussions with town staff already about those retaining walls, and we were assured that our plan could be revised slightly after this meeting to meet the requirements. And that's why we thought we had an approval recommendation today. So I appreciate the discussion today, and I guess if you're dead-set on moving forward with a continuance, I would ask that we have some, that you give us some even more direction on what you would like to see there, though I think I understand from all three of your comments, what you'd like to see in the future, and we'll work on those things, too. So I will take any questions. I will open it to any questions, particularly to our engineer and our traffic engineer, if you'd like to resolve any more of that today. We would be really happy to move this project forward, because what this continuance means for us is that we can't get in front of your town's council until after their recess, their summer recess. And that hurts us, you know, that time is just, it's just, so if you're intent on moving forward with the continuance, and I understand you probably are, then I would just ask for any more specific feedback on those four issues that we heard about this morning.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Yes.
I will take questions from the commission for the applicant. Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Mary?
Yes, sorry about that. I thought I was done.
For being here.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to personally assure you, and I'm sure my fellow commissioners feel the same, that what has transpired tonight with a possible continuance does not at all reflect poorly on you and your team that you brought up here this evening.
We do appreciate that.
And I'm sure you know that there are many times when conversations take place like this, that in the end, it brings in a much better project, not only for your developer, but for the town of Prescott Valley. So that's what I'm looking forward to, and we want to embrace this project.
Thank you so much.
Because you are correct, it is needed. But there is a few things yet to be worked out, where we can happily and wholeheartedly support you and your venture for the town.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that.
Welcome to the town.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Laney?
Being an old real estate person, these are being built to be leased.
Correct.
Is there a possibility that in the future, when the market changes, they could be condo-minimized and sold as units and not be leased?
Yes. And for just a moment, I'd like to have Mr. Boniface state up, take him up and address that. He's the best one to talk about.
Hey, commissioners. My name's John Boniface with Trilogy Residences. Appreciate your time. So one thing we're doing across the country and across our portfolio is, there is a period of time where would-be home buyers, it's not an option for them. And so when we initially went under contract and then ultimately purchased this property, our vision was to create, call it a phase one and a phase two, where you had a rental component and you had a for-sale component. And part of the reason why it's taken us so long to get in front of you tonight is because about third quarter last year, the for-sale component no longer was an option, where that just didn't exist. And so one thing that we've appreciated working with staff is that we've come up with the water supply. Now gives us the flexibility to secure water rights, advance the development. And in other places, we're setting it up so that in the event that, in the future, it becomes feasible, that they convert to owner-occupied units, we're in the position to offer that to our residents or to others that are coming into the town. So yes, it is a vision that we're setting up for that flexibility.
Commissioner Rankin?
While you're there.
Sure.
So I guess my question would be, as you go through and you consider changing it from leases to purchases, and on the overall complex, you've got 365 or some units in here, are you going to build that out in phases? Is it, how is that going to be handled?
We will. And so if you look at the, I don't know how to click to the overall site plan, the west side of our site has much more elevation change than the east side of our site. So what we, how we were thinking about this is that there would be, the west side of the site would be the phase that would be converted to owner-occupied first. So we'll build out the east side of the site in the beginning. And, you know, from now to site development, to vertical construction, to actual lease-up, it's probably three years until we're building out the west side. So it very well may change that by the time we even get there, we're able to build them specifically to that buyer. Or we build it out and continue to lease up and convert, you know, some other time further into the future.
And by that, what you're saying is you're going to build out the east side first, but you're pretty much reliant on Jasper Parkway being completed before that can happen? Am I correct?
Well, our understanding is that Jasper will be completed theoretically before we're even under construction. So depending on what happens between now and when we get there, we'll obviously determine some of the logistics plan. But our understanding is that that will be there by the time we need it.
Okay. I wish you luck with that.
And in the event that it's not, obviously, that's the beauty of having secondary means of access, but.
Any other questions from the commission at this time? Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. John, is the portfolio that you're presenting before us tonight, have you built that elsewhere? And if so, where?
So this particular product, we're building in South Carolina, North Carolina, Georgia, and down in Phoenix.
So I'm a little concerned with the overall architectural design of this product, because it, to me, surely does not represent...
So I noticed in staff's, can you get it to where, they had a, call it an old product, it's actually not what we intend to deliver here, so keep going a little bit. We have some renders here. This is our Arizona
Okay.
version of this. We have a coastal, east coast version of this as well. But this is what the streets in this community would look like.
So this beautiful photo happens to show sidewalks on both sides of the road.
It does.
Are you going to do that in our proposed community?
So our intent is to have pedestrian access throughout the community. Usually, that is accomplished on one side of the street. So the renderer artistic license there, but...
But you might consider putting it on both sides of the street?
Where we would need to, to create pedestrian access throughout the community, we would. But if we can accomplish that on one side of the street, that would be our intent.
Perfect. And one more question. Where are you in obtaining the water supply certificate?
Present.
I know, but it's part of...
Well, we can't really discuss water. So I would like to, let's scratch that. Scratch that question. We can't discuss, we can't discuss water with planning and zoning, so my apologies. So...
I hate to be scratched.
Yeah, sorry about that. Water is one of those topics we're not at liberty to discuss. We have no purview over. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner.
That I think this project is exactly in keeping with the affordable housing report that we had in our study session. And that it wouldn't behoove us to pile on additional requests and changes, which makes it less affordable.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
At this time, before I invite staff to come back up, since we do have this agendized as a public hearing item, I'll invite any comments from the public at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak from the public on this? Come on up. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
I'm Patricia Betto. I live at 3883 North Fairfax Road in Granville, and am a resident of Prescott Valley. Did I leave something else?
No, you got it.
Okay. So I just want to address some things that have come up. They're a big concern for everybody in Prescott Valley. It's water, it's traffic, it's access to medical facilities, it's affordable housing. And what I don't hear about this project is, that doesn't seem to address any of this. I would like to know what the lease is going to cost. I'd like to know who these families are, are they single people? When I calculate the 385 divided by the 33 acres, it's like the plots would be 61 feet by 61 feet, and that's only if you had no roads, no driveways. So I don't know how big these units are. And we have a mature neighborhood on the other side of what is going to be a new Jasper Highway, that have families. A lot of that housing is affordable. These people all have kids, and they're going to be right across the street from this giant beehive of people that I don't know who they are, I don't know who they are serving in our community. When we talk about who needs housing, are we going to have city employees in there? Are we going to have teachers in there? Or are we looking for housing for families? So that is a massive concern. And this talk about, are we going to sell these eventually? Well, we all know that with the Arizona State Water Law, the only reason that they can build this is because they're considered commercial and exempt. And so by selling these as residences, they would have to provide proof of where they're going to get their water. And the reason they can't do that is because there isn't any water. We even sell our reclaimed water. So we don't know where that's coming from. In addition to that, excuse my messy notes, how are we dealing with traffic? Okay, we just talked about doing Jasper, or getting it going, they've started. We just sort of relieved the traffic on East Prescott Highway. And again, there's no sidewalks there, but it's better than it was, because the town somehow didn't plan Granville, much less the Jasper community, with proper circulation and access. And where does everyone want to go? They want to go to Glassford Hill Road, and they want to go to the 69 Highway. What is our number one complaint? The 61 Highway is overloaded, it's dangerous. So the solution is build another road cutting across that nobody will use, because people want to go to Prescott, excuse me, they want to go to the 69, I'm sorry. And so this is just adding to that traffic load. So what do we tell the residents when they can't even make it down the street anymore? When they're begging for relief from all of these problems, what we're doing is we're adding to it. So remember, please, you are advocates for this town. You are not advocates for the developers, you don't work for the developers. And I wonder why we would even consider this project at all. Why would it even get out of the starting gate? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll close before a public comment, and I'll invite the applicant back up.
Thank you, Commissioner Zirk, chairperson. So if you would take a look at this slide, I want to kind of address some of those comments that were just made. The existing zoning for this property is R1MH7, R1MH6, and C2. By rezoning this property and making this development, we are reducing traffic, reducing trips by 68%. So if it stays the way it is, and it gets developed that way, the traffic will be much, much worse. If we develop it the way we have proposed, the traffic will be reduced from what would occur here. I know that you don't want to address water, but I will tell you that this... I know that you don't want to address water, but I will tell you that this project does not need an assured water supply certificate. We have been assured by WAM, which is the company that supplies water from affluent credits from the town of Paradise Valley, that the water that we need is available in the quantity that we need it. So that's all I'll say about that. And I think that was all I really wanted to cover there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'll invite staff back up. Do you have a date in which you would like us to hear this? Next, next month, or in June or July? What, what's the date?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Date specific would be our next meeting, June 12th.
Okay.
Your next meeting, rather. And that's what we would recommend, continuing until that time.
Okay.
To resolve some of the issues.
All right, with that, is there a motion to table this item until the June 12th meeting? And this is, we'll take it on separate motions. Motion to table zoning map change 23-001 until the June 12th meeting?
I move that we table zoning map change 23-001 until the June 12th P and Z meeting.
Is there a second? All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody, any, any knows? Saying none, all right. Is there a motion to table preliminary development plan 23-001 until the June 12th meeting?
I keep forgetting that button. Um, I, I move that we table P D dash, or did it go?
23-001.
P D P two, 23-001 until our next meeting on June, on June 12th.
Been moved, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. We will see this next month. Moving on to the next public hearing item, which we'll also be hearing the accompanying preliminary development plan, is zoning map change 23-002 upon the application of Preston Johnson, agent on behalf of Maticus Hospitality Group. A request for zoning map change from RS Residential and Services to C2-3 PAD, Commercial General Sales and Services Planned Area Development on approximately two acres located north of State Route 69 on the northwest corner of the frontage road in Glassford Hill Road. Preliminary development plan 23-002 upon the application of Preston Johnson, agent on behalf of Maticus Hospitality Group, a request for preliminary development plan approval for development for proposed hotel on approximately two acres located north of State Route 69 and the northwest corner of the frontage road in Glassford Hill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As you mentioned, the item before you is zone map change, item number one, and a PDP, preliminary development plan, item number two. This is a request by Preston Johnson, the agent, for a zone map change from RS PAD to C2-3 PAD, Commercial General Sales Service Planned Area Development on approximately one acre. And if I can, here we go. This is a, an elevation of the front of the property. The property is located on Horizon Lane Pleasant View Drive on the frontage road and Glassford Hill. And on the top is Pine View Drive. The zone map change is for the one acre parcel that borders Horizon Lane and Pine View Drive. It's in a location with other commercial projects. As you can see, the Hampton Inn is across Glassford Hill. Just to the north is the IHOP, Fry's, Walmart, et cetera, and a pediatric dentistry shop immediately to the south. The square-shaped lot that I was just describing, the subject of the zone map change is adjacent to the vacant parcel, vacant land you see there on, on Glassford Hill where Pine View does not go through. And that area is, here's the, actually the layout of the, of the hotel. As you can see, there's ingress, egress off of the frontage road, off of Glassford Hill. That's the entrance to the hotel, in and out. There is also out lane, out, egress, if you will, on Pleasant View Drive. We would encourage the developer to encourage folks to do a left turn out there, away from the neighborhood, away from the existing neighborhood. And as you can see on Horizon Lane, there is an outlet there for fire purposes. This will be a gated gate, or a gated outlet that is only available in emergencies. This is a view of, of the project land parcels, if you will, looking towards downtown. As you can see across, immediately across the street is the existing Hampton Inn Hotel. It is approximately the same size, four stories tall. This particular project is proposed to be four stories and 90 guest rooms. The amenities will include things like an indoor pool, it will also have pickleball courts and things of that nature. The preliminary development plan, I think that you have seen, generally outlines the bulk and the location of the proposed structures, as you can see from the slide. Again, it's a four-story Homewood Suites Hotel with 90 guest rooms, an indoor pool, outdoor patio with barbecue, outdoor pickleball courts, and a fitness center. The property immediately to the south is designated on our general plan as community commercial in its own C2, and is currently the site of the pediatric dental office. Immediately north across Horizon Lane is the existing Lynx Lake Estates 2 residential area. Immediately adjacent to the northeast is a portion of Pine View Drive, and immediately adjacent to that is Glassford Hill Road. The segment of Pine View alignment does not extend down below where it exists now, and that alignment will stay there. The right-of-way along north Glassford Hill Road will be developed by the developer into a landscape area with sidewalks and will connect, as you can see, the dirt area that is there now to the adjacent properties which are developed. The property to the west is designated as low-density residential and is actually the site of the church, as you can see there on Pleasant View. The parking lot will be entirely on the parcel to the south there that is already zoned for that type of activity, and it will include 95 parking spaces, which meets code requirements, and include four accessible spaces. The final development plans are required for zoning map changes, as you know, for specific development projects in the pad overlay district, which this is. These are approved by the town council after approval of preliminary development planned by the commission, and all final development must be in conformance with the town general plan and all town standards. And as I mentioned earlier, access to the site will be provided from those three proposed driveways that accommodate the paved parking lot. And if I may go back, I can show that to you again. Off the frontage road is the two driveways in and out to the front of the building, and then to the west is an outlet onto north Pleasant View Drive that, again, we will encourage a left turn lane or left turn arrow out there. Now, all driveways are assumed to be stop-controlled with full access and the fourth emergency gated access I, I mentioned to you earlier on Horizon. A traffic impact analysis has been done for the project, and that indicates that there will be a total of 352 daily trips to this site, including end trips of 28 end trips, 14 in, 14 out during the AM peak hours, and approximately 33 end trips, 16 in, 17 out during the PM peak hours. The fire emergency access is provided on Horizon, Horizon Lane and will not be utilized unless necessary for fire access, emergency access. The zoning on the site is currently RS and is proposed to be changed to the C2-3 PAD, which will allow for this project to move forward. The general plan designation for the land use of the parcel is community commercial. And the requested rezoning is conform, is in conformance with Chapter 6, the land use element of the general plan, which states that that community commercial designation is intended to allow for both neighborhood and community-serving uses. This land use designation is typically located along arterials like Glassford Hill due to the potential amounts of traffic generated. Zoning districts compatible with the CC designation include the C2 that were, that is being asked for. There was a neighborhood meeting held in conjunction with this application, and notices were sent out to the property owners within 1,000 feet. It was reported that 28 people attended along with three emails and one phone call message. There was discussion about the project and potential impacts on traffic, and those who attended the meeting, many of those who attended the meeting were opposed. There were several objections to the proposed rezone, as well as some that were in favor of the project. So it was a mixed review, if you will. Staff observes that the applicant has met the town code requirements for the neighborhood outreach and requested C2-3 PAD zoning in conformance with the general plan. Development in accordance with the, with the preliminary development plan is appropriate per town code and town code standards, and with the limitations set forth as conditions of approval in the staff report. Staff asks that each item be acted upon separately. There's a zone map change and then the PDP. Approval by the town council, here's one of the conditions, two of the conditions. Approval by the town council of a final development plan is required by code and will be in place prior to the issuance of any permits or anything of that nature, as well as being approved by all town departments, including utilities, traffic, engineering. And in addition, staff has added a request from the adjacent property owner for a six-foot separation fence between the parking lot that you see here and the pediatric, pediatric dental office. In addition, as I mentioned to you, this is the landscape plan for the project. The applicant has agreed to landscape that vacant dirt area that you see along Glassford Hill, installing a sidewalk there and allowing people to use that as pedestrian access up and down Glassford Hill. So the staff is asking for two motions from the commission. The first is on ZMC 23-002. The second is on the PDP, preliminary development plan, for the new four-story Homewood Suites comprising 60,300 square feet with 90 guest rooms, indoor pool, spa, outdoor patio, barbecues, outdoor pickleball court, and a fitness center. And we're conditioning that, that submittable final development plan in conformance with the preliminary development plan be forwarded to the town council for approval. And we would ask that commission make a motion to approve that preliminary development plan as a separate vote from the zone map change. Be glad to answer any questions if you have them at this time.
All right. Thank you, Ernest. Any questions of the commission? Commissioner Rankin?
Uh, just one question. The frontage road. Is, in the drawing there, it's kind of hard to see, there's a kind of a bar ditch in there right now? Is that going to be cleared out? Is that, how is that going to be handled? And is the frontage road able to handle the additional traffic specifically between this project and Glassford Hill?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the, for the question, Commissioner Rankin. Staff has worked with the applicant. Street improvements, curb gutter sidewalks will be required to town standards and code, as well as the drainage issues need to be addressed. And the applicant is here, by the way, if you have any questions of them.
Commissioner Evans?
I'm a bit concerned about pedestrian and vehicular safety. I would presume the principal way into this, you're liable not to be coming down Glassford from 89 or 89A, whatever it is up there. You're probably coming off 69, turning on Glassford, and then taking that left turn into the frontage road, which I had a long look at it today. It's just that little left turn island. I don't know how to fix that. It is a concern that I have, maybe you have some ideas there. And it, also from a pedestrian safety point of view, and again, I don't know if this is fixable. There's no restaurant, as far as I can see on site, so anybody staying there is going to have to walk or drive to the various restaurants or fast food places along Glassford Hill. And I'm just concerned about anything from jaywalking to, to who knows what, to go for a burger at 6 o'clock.
Great comment, Commissioner Evans. One of the reasons that the applicant is doing the sidewalk and the landscape areas along Glassford Hill is to have access to IHOP, which is directly north of this project, and then the Frye Shopping Center and some of the amenities that are there. So those are the ways that, that we're looking to look at pedestrian access and safety that way. Vehicular access will be coming in. As you mentioned, there's a short stacking lane, if you will, from Glassford to make that left turn in. The traffic impact analysis did not recognize any additional queuing that's responsible or required for that, and said that with the number of trips that are in and out during AM and PM peak, that it should be adequate. Now, we can have, and we will have our staff engineer review that for adequacy, but at this point, the staff felt that it was adequate.
I'd be, I wouldn't expect you to have this answer available off the top, but I'd be very interested in knowing if that particular left turn onto the existing frontage road businesses is any more or less dangerous than other enters. For example, is that, you know, a very fender-bender-y place now, or is that...
Ernest, maybe I can answer this, because looking at the map, there is a median there. So if you're coming north from Highway 69 onto Glassford, you, this is a fix that was done a few years ago, you were not able to turn left from Glassford onto the frontage road. You can only turn right onto Paveway, and that's it. And then, and basically, you can turn, if I'm not mistaken, going, if you're southbound, yes, southbound on Glassford, you can turn left onto Paveway, but you cannot turn from Glassford onto the frontage road, if I'm not mistaken. Is that, is that, I mean, do we...
You're, you're exactly correct, Mr. Chair. Here's a representation up on the, on the screen for you, and that does show that, that right turn in, southbound from Glassford Hill, and the turn in from Glassford Hill to the left are not going to be allowed, as you stated.
Mr. Rankin, go for it.
There, yes, sir. With a small queuing lane. And, and again, their traffic engineer that did the report indicated that he did not feel and did not recommend additional queuing. And the other problem with that short queue is that it's very close to the intersection, to the stoplight, and I don't believe there's enough stacking room to be able to do additional queuing in that lane.
So pretty much, so if, and just kind of clarification here, so if someone is really wanting to get to this project from 69, they would have to go down 69, past Glassford, hang a right, then go on the, basically the frontage road and come back, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I'm sorry?
Is that the left, left...
So you will be able to turn left on frontage road from going north on Glassford?
I didn't think there, again, I, again, I don't think you're allowed to right now.
I drove it today, twice.
Okay. Because I know you can, there's that median there, so...
But there's a cut through the median.
Okay, a cut through, but I thought that was...
It's a very short queuing lane there, you're right.
Okay.
Yeah.
But yet, that will not be allowed?
Uh, well, we haven't determined that yet, or haven't had a chance to have the traffic engineer look at that and makes additional recommendations moving forward. At this point, preliminarily, our engineering manager felt that the traffic impact analysis indicated that that wasn't necessary.
Okay. Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. Ernest, thank you. So if we're going to have the traffic engineer look at this, then should that condition not be in part of the approval because it doesn't reference anything about traffic? It talks about the town engineer. But maybe we should put the, put that in the stipulations?
That could be added, ma'am. We do... We do, and staff report indicate that off-site and drainage improvements will be recommended by the town engineer and public works director. So we could add that as a stipulation, if you like.
Yes, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
That was mine.
My mistake. I have to apologize. I was, I always turn from Glassford onto Paveway, and I forgot that you can't turn left there, and I just hardly ever seen anyone do it.
It's just really scary.
Scary, yeah.
And if I could add, I think the concern, then, is if there's going to be a little bit more traffic in that little turn onto...
The frontage road there?
The frontage road. There's also the ability for someone, I believe, on the frontage road to go all the way across to Paveway.
I believe that is restricted, sir.
That doesn't exist? I see a lot of shaking of heads in the...
I believe it's a restricted movement.
I've just seen it happen, so it probably wasn't legal, but it does happen.
Please, no comments from the public at this time. Any other questions of staff? This, thank you, Ernest.
The applicant is here, representative to speak and answer questions.
This time, I'll invite the applicant up.
Hello.
Go ahead, state your name for the record, sir.
Yeah, my name is Saki Reindersma. I am the architect of the project. I represent Stuart Reindersma Architecture. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, council members. Preston Johnson, who is the applicant, is actually my employee. Just so when you hear the name Preston, that's actually an employee of mine, is project manager of this project.
Go ahead and get it a little closer to the mic.
A little closer to the mic, all right. So again, my name is Saki Reindersma, the architect, and here, to here answer any questions you guys may have. Obviously, it's a Homewood Suites, 90-room hotel. We did have our neighborhood meeting, and I do remember the planner basically telling us that there were a few people that are in favor, actually not at that meeting, all right? I don't think I heard anybody actually in favor at the meeting. It was quite, you know, boisterous, and we had a good exchange, and we had a basically very good discussion. I did have a couple of people afterwards thanking me for attending, and I did keep a couple of phone calls that, you know, they said they would probably be in favor, but they would like to see that crash gate over at Horizon, basically, that we added, to basically limit any access off of there. We would be open to basically making sure that people make a left off of Pleasant and don't enter into the neighborhood in that regard. The left-hand turn lane from Glassford is available. It is a short queue. You cannot go across, even though I guess people do make an attempt to do so, even though that's against the law. But I'm here to open and answer any questions you guys might have.
All right. Any questions at this time of the applicant from the commission?
I have one. Will this hotel at some point in time be part of a chain?
A chain? No, probably not a chain.
And it's across the street?
Well, it's a Homewood Suites, right? So it is a branded hotel, all right? It is part of the Hilton brand, and like the Hampton, it's also a Hilton brand. But, you know, I guess you consider it's a national brand. It's not necessarily a chain.
And I have another question. Would it be possible to have some type of a large meeting room or a large... We have a serious need in Prescott Valley for facilities like this that have a room that serves food for club meetings. Has that ever been considered?
We, no, that wasn't considered in this plan. We could be more open to consider it. We have a lot of open area in the lobby area. There is also, there's breakfast that's served every morning. There's a breakfast area as well, so that maybe alleviates some of the people looking for food, because that is available to them. And we do have a fitness center and some other activities, but we could certainly consider a room like that.
I'm just advocating for this, because I belong to clubs, and we have a real difficult time trying to find a place for luncheons, for our luncheon meetings, that'll hold 100 people.
Yeah, well, that'd be great.
So if you have the ability, that would be really nice to add it on somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. Welcome, Saki. Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
So at the neighborhood outreach meeting, what were all, were the opposition, what were some of their comments, and how did you answer them and react to them?
Well, you know, I was very open. I mean, part of this is the development and the prosperity of the landowner to be able to, you know, do what they would like to do, and that's part of our rights as citizens to enjoy land and basically develop and build. The, really, they were worried, concerned about traffic, all right, and what this was going to do. They didn't really want this hotel at this location at all, all right? They're concerned about safety, they're concerned about traffic, much what everybody else was talking about. You know, and I mentioned to them that you have the power to devote, and voting, basically, gets your council members, and if you basically want to continue that process, then vote members in that basically don't pro building. So, I mean, that's basically how I basically pressed it. I mean...
Regardless of the power to vote, how did you address their traffic or safety concerns? What are you going to do as the architect and the developer of this product to put those concerns to rest?
Well, we were leaving it to the traffic engineers who do that, because I'm not the architect, but the, I'm the architect and not the traffic engineer. And the traffic engineer would do the study for us to basically determine what the load was of 392 cars that he said that were coming in and out. I also mentioned that most of the traffic is basically on the weekends, you know, and evening and morning. There's not a lot of day traffic, and not necessarily all the way through the days either. But the traffic engineer basically offered to create the TIA for us and present that and find out what we would have to do to mitigate any traffic concerns that would be part of this project.
Because traveling on that corridor, in that road component on a daily basis, there's a lot of traffic.
I understand, yeah.
So have you considered putting up additional signage? Are you working with the town for maybe some additional signage requirements? Exit here, no left turn?
Yeah, we'd absolutely look at that. I think the comment with the no left turn, or the no right turn off of Pleasant, coming off of the one entrance on Pleasant side would be a great idea, to put that, basically, a signage to encourage people to do that, so that we can limit the number of cars in their neighborhood, because they were worried about that as well.
Right. So you are positively looking at that then?
Absolutely, all right. Absolutely. Try to make this a wonderful spot for everyone in the community, and that they enjoy it, and that it's safe, and that it's a good addition to Prescott Valley.
Thank you, Saki.
Any other questions from the commission for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir. What we'll do, we'll open the floor to public comments and then invite you back up.
You bet.
Ernest, did you have something else to add?
I'll do that to the public.
Okay. So at this point in time, I'll open the floor to public comment. Please remember, speakers are limited to three minutes. After the, upon the conclusion of three minutes, please promptly finish your remarks. Please keep your comments brief and to the point. Please try not to repeat what others have already said, and then direct any questions you may have through the commission to me, the chairperson. And then we will, like I said, have the, invite the applicant and staff back up after your comments. So at this time, if you're wishing to address the commission, please come on up, go use this podium. Come on, sir. Come on up. And what I'm going to have you do, because, you know, we do have the neighborhood across the street, I'd like for you to introduce yourself, go ahead and state your name for the record, and let us know where you live, sir.
My name is David Cardy, and I live at 3101 Pleasant View Drive.
Okay.
When I went to the original meeting that we had, when we started talking about traffic, he gave several scenarios of where the traffic could go, and none of that would work. But he said he'd go down to the next turn on the Glassford Hills, and they'd turn left there. They can't. It's only a right-hand turn. The way it's designed right now, the only way to get to the Civic Center, or anything down at Finley Toyota Center, or any of those centers down there, is through the neighborhoods. It can't make a left turn on Glassford. You can't make, you can't get there. So, so this is going to put the traffic through our neighborhood. That's one of the reasons it was half acres, is because we kept the traffic down, and we didn't have as much congestion. As far as driving in the mornings and coming through in the evenings, we walk in the evenings, because it's hot, and it's cooler, and we walk in the mornings because it's cooler. So the middle of the day is usually not a concern, because we don't walk in 100-degree weather. So putting it that way, that just makes more congestion. I had made a couple suggestions to somebody at the council. One of the solutions would have put sidewalks down Pleasant View Drive. They said they couldn't make the builder do that, but you could make an agreement with them where we paid some and they paid some. The traffic there is going to be horrendous. I come, I make that left-hand turn all the time. Sometimes it takes me 10, 15 minutes to make the turn, because of the light at Glassford, it's so far backed up. So this is just going to make a nightmare when it comes to traffic. As far as the building goes, it's zoned that way, for the building isn't quite that tall, is the way I was explained. So they're putting a taller building in that area, right next to the residential. That's why it wasn't zoned that way. So my main concern, like he says, is the traffic. And I don't believe that, when they first went into the project, that they really looked at traffic, because they didn't have any answers to our questions on traffic, none whatsoever. So that is my concern. And then the sidewalks, and then putting it, the exit on Horizon as a fire only, you might as well leave, if you're going to build that there, then leave it open to the public to get in and out, too. Because down Pine View, there's houses only on one side of the road. The rest, the other side, is a ditch, and there's no houses. So there's not quite as much congestion on that road as there is on Pleasant View. That's a Band-Aid. The problem here is, where's the traffic going to go when it comes out of this place? And by putting it driveway out on the Pleasant View Drive, the only way they can get to Finley and the Civic Center and everywhere else is to go right down Pleasant View Road to get to Sunset.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cindy Aubrey. I live at 3076 North Pleasant View Drive. I do have a question for you, Sandra Laney. Would you want this in your backyard as a meeting place? No, I don't think so. Our property values are going to go down, because who wants to live by a hotel? Is that fair to us? Is that fair to the people who are retiring and trying to sell their homes? It's not fair. A lot of people have worked hard to get our homes, and it's not fair to put these people that are coming in and out, just not used to our area, running up and down our streets. We don't even have police that will monitor the speeding as it is. We have some children on our street. We have elderly on our street. It's not fair to take away our property. It's not fair to have these people check out our homes, try to steal from us. It is not fair to put such a large building in such a small retirement community. We have a lot of wonderful people in our community that does not deserve this, and we need to be able to keep our residents and our neighborhood quiet and safe. If you want a meeting place, go on the other side of town. I don't care, but not in a residential neighborhood. And is it fair for these people to lose their property values? I don't think so. I mean, you wouldn't want to lose what you've earned. You wouldn't want somebody coming on your property and taking it, no more than you would want somebody to take the value of your home and drop it down to nothing, because nobody wants to live next to a big, old, huge hotel. It is really not fair. Thank you.
Hold on, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy, for your comments. Did you go to the neighborhood meeting?
Yes, I did.
And you expressed some of these same concerns?
Not only that, but the traffic. If you've ever, if you look, that is not a perfect rendering. To be able to cross over that frontage line, which I have my dogs to try to walk on that sidewalk, you know, that's between 69 and the frontage road, you have no idea how many times I've almost been hit, because that curve is so deep, that you're right in the middle, and that's, you know, you've got a car doing 60 miles an hour around that curve.
I understand your concerns. You also mentioned that you don't want to have such a large building in your community. If it were smaller, or you don't want anything?
No, I'd rather have something that the community can use. We cannot use this. It is not beneficial. Our kids can go to the dentist. Our kids can go to the medical. Our kids can go to the Jen's Restaurants. We can go to the fries, you know? It's, I mean, we need fries in a Walmart, more than we need a hotel, you know?
Very much.
So, thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
We're commissioners, not council.
Sorry. My name's Dan Ness. I live at 3025 North Pleasant View, which is between Horizon and Sunset. I've lived here for 38 years on that street. Specifically, these streets are chip-sealed, no sidewalks, no curb and gutter. We kind of addressed that. This will take a ton of traffic down Horizon. It just makes sense. Anyone going to the downtown area, Siri's going to take them right down that road. The entrance onto Sunset off of Pleasant View is essentially a blind intersection. You can barely see to the left. You have to get almost into the street to see left. The, to look to the right is even worse, and there's, that is a place that has a sidewalk. So anybody concentrating on traffic coming down Sunset, which is getting busier and busy as a corridor all the time, isn't going to notice any pedestrians to their right. It's going to be very dangerous. And once you get far enough to actually see down there, because of where the block fence is, it's, you're in the street already. Sunset, or the frontage road and Pleasant View is also a blind intersection. If you come up past the dentist and you're coming up south, you cannot see to the left. That S curve, 15 miles an hour, people don't drive it at 15 miles an hour. You have to really be aware of what's coming down that street. I live there. I drive it all the time. It's dangerous. I thought they were going to put one entrance, let alone two. People come around that corner off of Glassford on the frontage at very high speed. And already, that area is blocked, like you said, very frequently, and traffic going the other way to the right often has to sit there for quite some time. Sometimes somebody will be polite, let somebody through, which in itself is another extremely dangerous thing, because they can't see the center two lanes, which are still moving fast, because everybody's turning right. So you're looking at a T-bone right there, car versus passenger or driver's side door. People do cut across there when they're not supposed to. Anybody coming into the hotel that isn't familiar, coming off of 69, has to quickly get into the left lane to get across Glassford. So just on that short S curve, there is going to be one, two, three, four entrances, two to the clinic, and then two now to the hotel, let alone, you know, another one coming onto Pleasant View. Overall, it's just too much there. The other thing is the height of the building. I can look out my back door and see three stories of the Hampton.
Time's expired, sir. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Obviously, I'm very objected to this. Thanks.
Anybody else wishing to address the commission? I, just so you know, sir, I think we've heard everyone so far on traffic. Do you have anything else to add with regard to this project that doesn't regard, doesn't have to do with traffic?
Doesn't have to do with traffic?
That is correct.
One point?
You can make one point. Go for it.
I live on the corner of Pleasant View and Horizon, and I...
Go ahead and state your name, sir.
Robert Galeon.
Okay.
And the east-west, Horizon, it's a racetrack between Pine View and heading west. I mean, I've been driving since I was 15 years old. I know when somebody's going 50 miles an hour or plus, plus, and it happens all the time. And then the stop sign...
Robert Galeon. And the east-west, uh, Horizon. Uh, it, it's a racetrack between Pine View and heading west. I mean, I've been driving since I was 15 years old. I know when somebody's going 50 miles an hour or plus. Plus, a, a, and it happens all the time. And then the, uh, the stop sign head north-south on Pleasant View and Horizon. Since I've been recent past, thousands of people that blow that stop sign. I've called the Prescott Valley Police Department and I've complained and they've had an office there occasionally. And they have responded. They've sat there. If they were there in a 48-hour period of time, they could pay a month's wages by giving tickets for that. The other thing that I, I'd like to bring up is that, uh, who are you trying to appease? Don't the citizens that have lived here, I've lived there for 20 years. And the people around me, good, honest, hardworking people. Don't we deserve to have a decent neighborhood? Do we have to have this, this eyesore and this traffic which is going to go through our area? There's no question about it. Please have some consideration for us. People that live there and pay our taxes and are law-abiding citizens. Please have some, you know, consideration for us. Please, I, I implore you to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Browning. I live three doors down from the four-story structure in a two-story house in a neighborhood that, uh, was intended for single-family homes. There are less homes on that street than 10% of the rooms in that building. People come here and they talk about traffic because they think that's what'll sway you. And, uh, they hear it over and over again, but it has nothing to do with it. It's simple that I understand the town wants density. I am not necessarily against density myself, but when I purchased that land in that neighborhood, I didn't purchase it so that I could be surrounded by apartment buildings. I didn't purchase it so that I could have a hotel in my yard. I can't look out any window on two sides of my home from the second floor and not see that building. There's no way around it. I, I don't have much else to say. I love that you want to find a meeting place for your, and your group. That's great. But that doesn't suit the people in that neighborhood at all. And yes, the traffic's horrible even when the church lets out. But now we're not just gonna have a church. We're gonna have one that's 365 days a year, seven days a week instead of for Lent or whatever extravagance is going on. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Anybody else? Come on up, sir.
Hi, my name is Mark Stuben. I live at, uh, 5604-
Get a little closer to the mic.
Mark Stuben. I live at 5604 East Killen Loop. I actually came for the other part of the meeting, not this part, but since there seems to be some contention and I agree with the comments about the traffic and things, I would challenge you guys to take a look at the hotels that have already started or planned over at the, uh, Center, Finley Center or across the street where they took out the little, uh, Children's Area and are putting another hotel. Is there a need to put a contentious hotel in our city at this point in time? Just you guys mull, you men and women mull that amongst yourselves. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Jerry Palmer. I'm at 2934 North Pleasant View. And, uh, we bought the house six months ago.
What was that, sir?
We bought the, we purchased our house six months ago. Our realtor never told us at any point that there was any plans for a giant hotel. I told him, I said, we finally saw this small sign out there on the side of the property, right? And all of a sudden, I start researching a little bit and I find out that you're planning on putting up a four-story building. I just spent almost $30,000 to have my backyard landscaped, right? Now who wants to sit in their backyard and have 900, 90, 90 people looking over the top of your house and watching everything you're doing? That's not, that's not the reason that we bought the house. And I don't think anybody on the council would appreciate it either. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, going once, going twice. All right, I'm gonna close public hearing. This time, and I'd like to invite the applicant back up. Sankey, you heard the, uh, the comments, but in particular, our first, our first comment from, um, from the public had to do with the fact, and I, I think he does have a point here and I'd like you to address it. That traffic going from this hotel to the, you know, Civic Center or Finley Toyota Center would actually have to go through a neighborhood to get to Sunset or anything like that to be able to access that. I'd like for you to address that.
Yeah, and so, I mean, we've limited the access off of Horizon with that gate on that side. And it makes, to make a, a left turn only on Pleasant would basically limit those people and, and so they don't have to go through your neighborhood. Uh, they would actually then have to go back out onto 69 and then come back around on that other way or make a left and then make a right and then make a U-turn to come around. When we were having the discussion and I had the map of the entire city and focused in on this area, um, I pointed out other options and ways that people could drive around, but most of them were objected by the people that no one would ever do that and they don't do that and they can't do that. So, um, but, um, we would probably limit the, the left turn, you know, make a left turn only off of Pleasant to basically make it go-
You don't dispute that people, the fastest way to get to some of these other places would be to go through these neighborhoods?
Well, you have that option of doing that because it's, you know, free world to drive on the roads that basically are public roads, of course. Um, people basically drive across the street and break the law and they're not supposed to do that either. Um, people go faster on that road and basically people mentioned that people are driving 60 and 70 miles an hour on streets that there weren't posted that fast either. Um, you know, we do try to basically limit and make sure that people do follow the rules and the laws that we have in our country. Um, and, you know, posted signs and, and those kind of things would hopefully be adhered to. Uh, you know, that's all, all we can say.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioner- I'm wondering if, again, in consideration of those concerns, for a 95-car parking lot, is it necessary to have three? Was it like a fire department? For example, the neighborhood folks are very concerned about people doing a right turn onto Pleasant View out of that back exit. Does that exit have to be there? And maybe if they came out of the Frontage Road ones, they'd still take a right on Pleasant View. I don't know. Uh, but at least you've, uh, kind of eliminated, uh, one access to it. I, I, but was the third access a, a fire department requirement or, or simply a design thing from you guys?
Yeah, it's a, um, a, a design for, um, opportunities for our, our guests, obviously, and for the fire department as well. Um, we'd be open to basically discuss that with the fire department if that's basically one of the limitations that you guys want to make. Um, we also will talk to the traffic engineers and they're gonna actually obviously remove, review the model and make sure that, um, it meets the standards that the city is, is open. But we're open to the suggestions and basically helping the neighborhood. I'm, during that meeting that we had in the neighborhood meeting, I was very open and encouraged people to speak out and come to this meeting that here, tell you guys what they think because it's very important that each person have an opportunity to speak at their op, you know, and have the chance to basically speak their, uh, their opinions.
Well, Mr. Sankey, I, I can, I can tell you just from sitting up here, I think this application needs some more work.
Okay.
I, I honestly do. I, I think you need to work with the neighborhood a lot better than what you, than what you have. I think you need to address their primary concern that, yes, the fastest way going north is going through neighborhoods and they, they have a legitimate point there. And I think that needs to be thoroughly addressed before we really, really consider this. Um, so I'm gonna recommend we table this.
Okay.
Um, and I, I'd also advise that you have another neighborhood meeting to address the neighborhood concerns. Um, I, I definitely just think we, this needs a little bit more work.
Yeah, I'm open to have another neighborhood meeting, um, and have that discussion. There are a couple of people that don't want this at all. I mean, we won't be able to convince them of that we're meeting the concerns because they do have like, I don't want it here, I don't want that building this tall, all those kind of things. And we also will address, uh, you know, their concerns as best as we can.
Okay. Commissioner Griffiths.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Saki, for understanding the importance of postponing this project this evening. I personally have heard from everyone in attendance this evening and I hear you loud and clear on your traffic. That is something that we seriously must consider and, Mr. Saki, it's a big deal.
Sure, absolutely.
I also want to say that we do have a need for other hotels such as this in our growing area. I, I don't know if this is the right spot. You, Mr., I want to call you Mr. Saki, sorry.
That's all right.
Saki.
Saki is the first name. Yeah, that's fine.
I appreciate your willingness to go back and embrace your community because they are very important.
Absolutely. Okay. Very good.
All right. I'll invite staff back up. You know, I really don't have a good date on this one to basically either continue it to June or potentially July. It'll be up to the applicant and so forth. Um, any recommendation?
Based on the comments from the commission, uh, if you decide to continue this item, we could do date specific on June the 12th as well.
I, I don't think we're, I don't know if we'll be ready at that point.
Okay, then the next-
We'll just leave it, uh, as unfortunately, an open-ended table until such time as, you know?
That's a desire of the commission. Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Griffiths?
Sorry, Chairman. Ernest, at such a point in time when Saki collectively puts together his new community meeting, is staff there? Does staff go to that?
Commissioner Griffiths, typically staff does not attend the neighborhood meetings, but under this circumstance, we, we can make, uh, make it sure that we have staff, uh, presence.
Request that. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Rutherford.
I have a question for Ernest. Could you also have the traffic engineer there? Because I think there are multiple issues here about access and that nasty frontage road curve that unfortunately is a speedway. And I'm very concerned about the, not only the difficult access, but the dangerous egress.
Yes, ma'am. What, what we can do is ask the applicant's traffic engineer to attend the next meeting with some, uh, recommended solutions to some of these issues.
Come on up, Sankey.
I do agree that we probably won't be able to do it by June 12th, all right? Because we do want to have the neighborhood meeting.
Keep it open-ended.
Have the neighborhood meeting and give everybody a chance and then do the postings and then basically have the meeting again. I would encourage staff, but also we should bring the traffic engineer there as well, all right? To that meeting too, um, because then they can actually talk to them as well and hear what the traffic has to say too.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Rankin.
Uh, just one thing. When you're, when you attend or whoever attends from, from staff there, this piece of property, um, right now with the zoning that it has, I think it would be important for, um, you to be able to inform the people that are there what could be put in there where there isn't any zoning change. Because no matter what goes on this piece of property, we're gonna run into the same scenario. And we just can't tell the owner of this property that you can never develop this property because of these situations. But I think if, it would help the people in the neighborhood specifically that if they knew that, um, what, what entities could come to your office and apply for, um, basically a building permit where they wouldn't have to even come through our, our board and how, uh, what kind of potential for, uh, traffic that that's gonna cause. I think that would help the, the neighbors too, uh, because I, I think as a, as a board, we just can't say, you know, we're not gonna develop anything on this piece of property. It's just gonna stay there vacant. We're, we're not able to do that. So by giving them that information, um, it may help them, um, see, you know, kind of the frustration maybe a little bit on our part and the developer's part and, and staff's part. Just a feeling on my part.
Thank you, Commissioner Rankin. Uh, excellent point. Uh, I agree with you. The, the property is, is, the property in question for the rezone is currently RS, Residential Service. And on that parcel, allowed by right use would be an apartment complex. So an apartment could be built there. Uh, whether it would be any more detrimental to the neighborhood or benefit to the neighborhood remains to be seen. But that's an excellent point on what could go there as an allowed by right use uh, without having come before the commission or the council. An apartment complex is one of the-
And then some forms of commercial as well in the RSPAD.
Yes, sir.
Zoning District. So, uh, and, and I think also going forward, if you can also, part of that staff, staff presentation, even though we may know that, it may not be a bad idea in staff presentation to actually do, you know?
Duly noted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? So at this point in time, is there a motion to table zoning map change 20, 23-002?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, um, postpone table zoning map change 23-002.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, is there a motion to table preliminary development plan 23-002?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to table preliminary development plan 23-002.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to our last public hearing item this evening is zoning ordinance amendment 23-002 upon the application of the town of Prescott Valley. A request to amend Article 13-14(c)(2) Commercial General Sales and Services, Section 13-14-080 Performance Standards in Chapter 13 Zoning Regarding Medical Marijuana Dispensaries, Marijuana Establishments of the Town Code of the Town of Prescott Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This zoning ordinance amendment proposed, uh, change, uh, is for performance standards. And in particular, it's performance standards outlined in, uh, the square footage of an allowed building and the hours of operation for an allowed building. Currently, the code allows the uses, but they limit the, there's a restriction on the size of the building, size of the storage facility and hours of operation. And the town has been approached about a potential use that, uh, that it compared our community to surrounding communities and what their restrictions were in terms of performance, uh, and performance regulation. And it was found that we were, uh, very dated in our size and our hours of operation. So it was requested that we potentially look at that. Our legal department has looked at-
Give me a second. Can I ask that the sidebar conversation go out to the, the hall, please? Can I, can I ask you to please take your sidebar conversation outside, please? Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, to, uh, the, uh, town legal department looked at those requests and has come up with these solutions, if you will, to our zoning code. Uh, and a little bit of background, if you recall, Proposition 207 was a statewide ballot initiative that actually allowed recreational marijuana. And the town back at the, in, in, when that was passed in 2020, actually looked at, uh, our standards and our performance regulations in terms of, uh, the size and square footage and went with the existing, uh, code requirements. At the, and, uh, the Proposition 207 again allowed, uh, anyone age 21 or above uh, to utilize recreational marijuana. At that time, the town decided that the prohibition on retail recreational marijuana sales in the town should be able, should not apply to establishments permitted by state law as a dual licensee to operate both a nonprofit medical marijuana facility as well as a recreational marijuana facility establishment in a shared location and with performance standards. When the performance standards of surrounding communities, including Prescott, Cottonwood, Flagstaff, uh, several other communities were compared to what the town standards were, we were found to be very, very tight in our regulations. we were found to be very, very tight in our regulations in terms of square footage and hours of operation. And it's been noted that other communities surrounding Prescott Valley have also established performance standards that either do not have the same restrictions or have different requirements as permitted by the state of Arizona for a dual licensee. This amendment to the town code will make these restrictions and requirements more consistent with our neighboring communities. With that, staff is recommending approval of the zone ordinance amendment as prepared by the town legal staff that would amend Article 13-14-080 Performance Standards and Article 13-15-070 Performance Standards in Chapter 13 of the Town Code that would actually eliminate the square footage requirements for facilities like this and expand the operating hours for medical marijuana dispensaries and medical, or marijuana establishments. That's the gist of it. I believe in your, in your packet, you received the amendments to the Town Code as prepared by the legal department. That's what they are recommending, just eliminating, in Item 13-14-080, it would be eliminating Item 7 and 8. And in Item Number 7, it would actually be extending the hours from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And in terms of Section 13-15-070 Performance Standards, it would eliminate the square footage requirements for cultivation facilities as well as, eliminate the requirement for the square footage requirement for storage facilities and cultivation. Be glad to answer any questions if you have at this time.
Also, Stephen, do you have anything to add on this one?
No, Matt. I wanted to say that our paralegal and Ivan worked on the proposed changes, and just thank them for that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chair. Ernest, when it says hours shall be from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., what days of the week is that?
That would be seven days a week, ma'am.
Should we say that in here, or is that commonly known knowledge?
I don't think it's necessary, as long as it's got the time.
It does have the time. It just doesn't say what days of the week, but...
Without, without that exclusion, it'd be presumed to be every day.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
We'll, we'll check the definition.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff?
Real quick one. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're, you're...
Are these restrictions similar to what would exist for liquor stores?
I'm sorry, sir. Could you...
Are the restrictions on the marijuana selling establishments in location and hours and size similar to what might apply to liquor stores?
I don't know if it's similar to the hours of operation of liquor stores. I would defer to our esteemed counsel to see if he has that off the top of his head.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but would not think so.
I mean, you passed by and...
Yeah. We can check that as well, though.
No worries. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner...
I have a question. Is the purpose of this to increase sales tax revenue and make our facilities more competitive with other communities?
Thank you, Commissioner Rutherford. That's a great question. In Prescott Valley, at present, there is one dispensary that's located in the County Island. Those sales taxes go directly to the county and do not come into the town. We've seen some projections of sales tax revenue into the town, and they're significant, and they would increase sales tax dollars to the town.
Well, aside from personal opinion, that this would also increase our social services I suppose, since the voters have agreed to do this, we might as well go along with it. But I think the whole thing is a big mistake.
Any other questions of staff? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With this being a public hearing, I'd like to open the floor to public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to address the commission on this topic? Seeing none, we'll close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion to approve zoning ordinance amendment 23-002?
I move that we approve EOA 23-002 Medical Marijuana Dispensaries and Establishments.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So move in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Chairperson Surtur?
Yes. Motion passes. Move on to Item Number 9, call to public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result. Public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Do we have anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll close call to public. Ma'am, come on up.
My name is Gloria Giles.
Go ahead and speak into the microphone, please.
My name is Gloria Giles, and I live at 3581 North Christine Drive in Prescott Valley. And I know it wasn't on the agenda, but I wanted to bring it to your attention if you have not discussed it previously, because we were just privy to the situation on 10,000 University Drive, the complex, the IT building that is going to be rezoned. So my question to the committee and all you commissioners is, has that been addressed with you, and has a decision been made?
None, that has not been brought up to this commission yet. And it, basically, we can, we have no idea when. Let's just put it that way.
Okay. So that answers my question, then. All right, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll call, close call to public. Go on to Item Number 10. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.[1772.58][1772.58](APPLAUSE).[1773.58][1773.58](MUSIC)